is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of the schedule to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the second day of December 2016. Legal notice of the adoption appeared in the December 19, 2016 edition of the Princeton Packet. Ms. Cottrell, would you call the roll?
Ms. Crumiller?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning? Mrs. Gunning? Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sproul?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mrs. Trotman? Mrs. Ullman?
Here.
Mr. Williamson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I understand that there is a report from the Nominating Committee. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Alan. The Nominating Committee met on January the 6th and we unanimously and enthusiastically nominated Wanda Gunning as Chair and Gail Ullman as Vice Chair for 2017.
So would that be a resolution that you're proposing, the adoption of, the election of those officers?
So moved.
And I second that motion.
Let's see, do you want to do a, I don't know if we need a roll call, but why don't we have one?
Ms. Crumiller?
Here, oh, yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning? Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sproul?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ullman?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations to our new officers.
Thank you both.
I'll give back the gavel where it belongs. I want to thank all of you and tell you that we're going to have an action-packed and exciting year and we have lots of things coming up that should be very interesting and we're going to have lots of meetings, so I'm glad to see that all of you are here tonight. It'll give you a taste of what it's going to be like. Did we have any announcements, Arlene?
The only announcement is the change of the regular meeting on February 2nd. It won't be a regular meeting. We're trying to schedule a legal session, so I'm not quite sure what time it's going to be, but it will be on February 2nd.
Thank you, and everyone was sending an email about which time they preferred for that meeting, so please get your vote in so you get your preference. All right. You were emailed a large pack of things for tonight. Let's start with the appointment of the Planning Board Attorney. Any additions, corrections?
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call on that or can we just do it? Okay, just everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The next one is the appointment of the Planning Board Secretary. Any resolution? Anyone want to move that one?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, we had a couple of more resolutions. The first one was special meetings. And the second one, I think, is fixed charges for meeting notices rather than resolution for fixed meetings. Is that right? Can we take these two together?
I'll move both of them.
Right, and?
A second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, you had a large Findings of Fact Packet for Charles Yedlin. This is preliminary and final major site plan and it was from the December 1st of last year. Were there any additions or corrections? There's a lot of material in this finding. Anyone? No? All right, would someone like to move this?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I think on this one, we probably should have a roll call. If you want to go through that, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Crumiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Ullman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. And we also had one set of minutes. These are from Thursday, June 16th of last year. Those who are eligible to vote on this are Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen, Ms. Crumiller, myself, and Gail Ullman. Were there any additions or corrections? I guess, yeah, those are the people who voted on it. Were there any additions or corrections at all? All right.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second. Julie Capizoli.
All those in favor? The agenda says June 16th and I think it's July, I'm sorry. Excuse me, got you. June 16th. Yes. Okay? Yep. Okay. And we voted on that. Everyone is in favor. Right. All right, that brings us to the first discussion item. This is a resolution in support of the Friends of Princeton Open Space Submission for a Stewardship Grant to the NJDEP. This is for the Mountain Lakes Management Plan and you have a memo from Lee Solo about this and a resolution supporting this from the Planning Board.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
I'll second. Gail Ullman.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Just a question. Does this involve us in any way other than simply approving the act? I mean, we don't have to do anything else.
The Planning Board, no. I believe they are asking Township Committee to provide some financial aid. It's a $50,000 matching grant. I believe most of the match, they've arranged for a private funding group to provide the match and it's around $6,000 that the municipality would be putting in. As you see, I crafted the resolution. This is something that's in the master plan to be supportive of. It covers about 140 acres in total. I think they're going to reduce the area and it's a stewardship plan. What they're doing is they'll be removing invasive species in a small area.
Thanks.
Okay, and if you're interested in the management plan for Mountain Lakes, it is online. It's easy to look at and very interesting to look at. Do you want to? Can I get you to call the roll on this resolution?
Ms. Crumiller?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sproul?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ullman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, and that brings us to the Engineering Department update, which you've all been waiting for. So, let's see, maybe you should introduce yourselves to the, we have new board members here and it's a new year, so do you want to start, Deanna, or?
Happy New Year, everyone. I'm Deanna Stockton, the Municipal Engineer, and we have Jack West as well, the Land Use Engineer with me.
I don't have to say anything.
I'm just going to go over briefly what engineering has accomplished in the last year and what we're looking ahead towards accomplishing in 2017. I've laid out this presentation kind of roughly on the strategies and the circulation element of the master plan. So regarding bicycle and pedestrian mobility, we had a lot of success last year with almost completing a bicycle master plan. We have received the final draft as of this afternoon from the consultant, so Lee and I will be working on the next step, which is getting something for the master plan committee to review for adoption.
Are you looking at a specific deadline to get it to the master plan?
I think I was told February is what Lee told me.
Okay, just wanted to?
Yeah, not as the final final, but to have the committee review it.
We've also received the final draft of the Nassau Streetscape Design Guidelines and that's actually going to be reported at the council meeting on January 23rd. So those were two big successes and what we're looking at moving ahead with in 2017 is a sidewalk subcommittee of the Complete Streets Group to review the sidewalk master plan as you are looking at your reexams of the master plan this year. We also started the Street Smart Princeton Campaign with Greater Mercer TMA last year. That was an educational campaign that was conducted at various locations on Washington Road and Nassau Street with the assistance of the University, Princeton Police, and it was successful in the fall. We're going to do another round of the Street Smart Campaign in the spring and that piece may include enforcement of motor vehicle and pedestrian laws. Where last fall, it was only education, now we're going to pull in the next piece of education and enforcement. Also working with state and the federal government to expand the Community Bike Share Program. Kim Jackson at the university has been very successful in moving her efforts along and we know that there has been a new installation at Princeton Shopping Center. So we are excited that this should be our year, if everything goes well with the federal government, that we'll have new bike share stations on municipal property. We're also working again with the state and federal government on replacing two traffic signals on Harrison Street. That's a Safe Routes to School grant that we've been working on and looking ahead to hopefully an installation this year to get, both of those traffic signals are lacking push buttons for pedestrian movements, so this is a big win for us. And then the last project that may or may not proceed is some sort of signal or rapid flashing beacon installation, study and investigation at General Johnson Drive and Rosedale Road. This was another project that we've put in for grant funding and so we're just waiting to see if we're successful in receiving a grant. Moving on to the local and regional public transit, we completed the installation of eight bus shelters last year. Oh, I have a typo, sorry. That's 2016, that's 17. And so we are looking ahead to this next year, adding seven more new bus shelters and that is including a Palmer Square flagship shelter and the Avalon Bus Shelter, which had been delayed through the executive order and the state shutdown last year. We also launched the new freebie bus as well as the new branding on the buses last year. So that was good success there. We're moving ahead in conjunction with Greater Mercer TMA on a Go Princeton Campaign, which is a marketing and educational campaign. We're trying to determine when that will be launched. It's going to possibly be tied to the bike share launch, but they're looking at a 12-month period of really getting a lot of information out to the public as to the transit options that we have, that you don't have to be tied to a single occupancy vehicle, that the bike shares open, Tiger Transit is available to the public. We have the freebie, both the commuter and the neighborhood bus shuttles, as well as Zipcar and Ride Share, and there's a lot of opportunities out there. So they have found, Greater Mercer has found that people just don't realize what's available. So this is a study or a project that was funded through the Mass Transit Fund with the university and they'll be launching that with our assistance. Public Transit Committee has been busy surveying employees downtown as to their commuting preferences and I think a general summary of information was recently presented to the Transit Committee. Also related to that is Ralph Widener's study of transit route integration. He's been looking at the freebie routing as well as Tiger Transit routing and then also looking at where university employees live in town to see if there's small adjustments that can be made to the schedules or the routes of those systems to capture a larger population and get people out of their single occupancy vehicles. And so we're hopeful that possibly in the fall, we can work with the university to change some of the routes and make those adjustments. Yes, David?
Is there any consideration of the New Jersey Transit bus routes and coordinating those as well with the Tiger Transit and the freebie?
That's more challenging. I think it's easier for us to adjust our schedule knowing what their schedules are, so that would be incorporated in the review, definitely. We are also working on getting the GPS transponder in our freebie buses and tying it into the university's Tiger Tracker system so that users of the freebie will be able to go onto an app or onto their computer and see where the bus is at any time and get an estimate for when it will be approaching their stop. So, good news there. I covered the bus shelters, specialized transit services. We've been working over the last couple of years with the school district reviewing hazardous bus routes. The town currently pays about $180,000 a year to the school district for hazardous busing and that is for those kids that live within the walking distance, which is either two miles or two and a half miles depending on the age of the students, but those are the children that don't have sidewalks or they don't have like a traffic signal that's with the push button and the pedestrian improvements. So we're working with the school district just to review what really truly is a hazardous route and that will then help us figure out what our priorities need to be to improve our sidewalk system and get kids safer to school in a healthier way rather than riding a bus. Crosstown Transportation Services has been very successful and Jenny knows this from previous council meetings, that it was so successful that we found we had more riders than our contract really would allow us to handle within the cost thresholds. So we are going to be out to bid in the next couple of weeks to recheck our bid numbers and our costs for our Crosstown Transportation Services. But I think right now, we did a two-month extension and it's 600 rides a month is what the current number is, so.
Deanna, could you just explain what that program is? I'm not even familiar with it.
Sure. Crosstown is a program available to residents 65 and older as well as the less abled in our community to use. They can use it for destinations within Princeton, for destinations to the hospital and the medical offices over in Plainsboro, as well as Princeton Fitness and Wellness up in Montgomery. It's been a great success. It's all managed through the Princeton Senior Resource Center. Residents will, can buy vouchers for $3 and they get reimbursed for rides to the medical center and to the offices from the medical center. So it's a great program.
But the town subsidized each ride, I think, eleven and a half dollars and it went $50,000 over budget, so we're really concerned about it. It's a really great program, but we have to consider maybe raising the price or something.
Moving on to traffic circulation, we have finally, after almost 10 years of working with DOT, we have finally gotten their acceptance that Mercer Street, Mercer Road, Princeton Pike is not a county road and that it should not be on the truck maps. And I think it was last week I received pictures from the state showing the change of the green highway signs on 95 and 295, so they're finally taking down that county route, 583 placard. And so we'll be following up with ALK and Enric to make sure that the GPS systems are updated as well. That was a big win. That was a great collaboration between the county, Lawrence, and Princeton to finally get that going. We installed the new traffic signal at Mountain Avenue and Great Road. A few hiccups on the implementation. We'll be doing final paving in the spring and final striping, but I have gotten some reviews from people that want to turn left off of Mountain Avenue and I do have, we have heard some concerns about backup on Great Road, so we're continuing to monitor that and work through the process. It's not done. Looking ahead to 2017, we've got the DOT Stony Brook Bridge Project, which if bids come in well, they will be looking to close 206 at the end of May and reopen it at the end of October. So that's going to be something that will be on our radar as well as the police to make sure that people are properly routing around town. We're also working with the Princeton Fire and Rescue Squad and they're planning to use the former DPW site here at Valley Road. Council last year, at the end of last year, approved a service contract to put in a permit to DOT to close Turhune Road at Route 206. So that's one of the first steps to then be able to consolidate that property on either side of Turhune between 206 and Mount Lucas Road. That project will be coming to zoning board because it will be requiring some variances, I think.
Is there, I know that there's an application, I think, for a signal at the end of Valley in conjunction with that. Are they tied together or are they going through the bureaucracy separately?
Well, it's all the NJDOT bureaucracy and DOT has made the commitment to install an emergency signal at their cost with their forces at the intersection of Valley and 206. They are also committing to make improvements to the Cherry Hill 206 traffic signal and change the lanes on Cherry Hill. So currently, as you're coming into town on Cherry Hill, you have a left and a through lane and then you have a right lane. That will be changed, so it'll be a left lane exclusively and a right and a through. And then going out of town on Cherry Hill, they would actually create three lanes for that outward movement, which would be a left, a straight, and a right. And that would be DOT's contribution to do. And then the town would work in improvements to Mount Lucas from Cherry Hill to Valley and Valley Road itself to make the appropriate changes to the roadway width to accommodate those lane, the lane changes.
So the current thinking is that there will not be any left turns still at Valley?
That is DOT's thinking, but we will be working with them through all of our channels to make that a full traffic signal. We've had our consultant go through a traffic study and there is, there would be a warrant net to have it be a full traffic signal, so I think we just?
A what?
A warrant. That's what they, they have specific warrants for determining whether traffic signals are needed, just like this, it's the same study we did for Mountain and Great Road. And so we've done a study of the two intersections, Valley and Cherry Hill. The state has done studies as well, so now it needs to be a meeting of the professional minds to have them agree with us that it needs to be a full traffic signal. That'll be coming to council. We need to complete a traffic signal agreement with DOT, so that'll be coming to council soon.
Everybody, we really want it to be a full signal. We're doing as mu, you know, we're, we hired a consultant?
That's very, that's very wise.
To represent us in front of DOT, to help us persuade DOT, right?
If we're closing off Turhune, we really need another full movement intersection.
I mean, there's just no queuing space at Cherry Hill. I mean, it's going to be a nightmare, even with three lanes.
Mm-hmm, yes. Mercer County is also currently out for design service, request for proposal for the Alexander Street Bridge Project. So I did speak with county engineer. He thinks it may be a three to five-year design process, but it is at least starting now, so we're pleased with that.
Will that include the Canal Bridge?
It does not include the Canal Bridge. The Canal Bridge is a DOT bridge. This would be the Millstone River Bridge as well as the culvert next to Metro.
Yeah. And those are county, so?
Those are both county.
Be nice if it could all be done at once. Would make life easier.
It would. Unfortunately, I don't know that I've seen that Canal Bridge on a transportation plan for the state looking ahead for the next couple of years. They've mentioned other canal bridges, but not Alexander. And then we also, out of the Complete Streets Committee, there is a Traffic Calming Subcommittee. Oh, I'm sorry, Lee.
I have a question about the culvert next to Metro. Are they just expanding the size of that culvert so that the street doesn't, isn't vulnerable to flash flooding?
I don't know if they are.
They're just replacing it as far as you know?
As far as I know, but we, we'll have a seat at the table so we can have that discussion and see if it's properly sized for the rainfall events that we typically design for.
A lot of the design in that culvert was more because it was a traffic hazard point and so, you know, I think that taking into account the water flow and so on would be a new event for that situation.
Okay. It might be an opportunity for a green infrastructure installation to just try to get more water into the ground before it reaches that culvert and, or at least detain it and slow it down and manage the, because I mean, I know a lot of places flooded last July, but that particular spot was really deep.
Okay, we'll take note. That leads us into, when we get to information. So then I've provided to you a list of really the major proposed roadway improvements that we're looking to do in 2017. The main one that we've been working on for probably the last five years is a joint project with Montgomery and this is our fourth joint project with- is a joint project with Montgomery. And this is our fourth joint project with Montgomery on Cherry Valley Road. And this would be a widening and improvement of the section from Cherry Hill Road to the Mercer County Bridge near Jefferson's Curve. And we've gotten all of our permits. Our last hurdle is the DRCC permit, but we have had a pre-application meeting with them. So we are looking to move it into construction this summer. Again, we're working on Walnut Lane. That is a project that we're working closely with the school district on. As Louise was mentioning, the July storms, we are all aware that the high school had the flooding and the situation there. So we are working jointly on finding solutions to help reduce, if not eliminate, future events like that. So that's moving ahead. All of the roadway projects are looked at under the guise of Complete Streets. We do have a working checklist that we're using. So we will evaluate all of these roadways under Complete Streets and incorporate any changes that we can through the process.
Right. That's a good question about the John Street Race Crosswalk Pilot. This is for the Mary Moss Playground, the entrance to the Mary Moss Playground?
Correct. Right. We've heard over the years, and then of course, more specifically when we started having the neighborhood meetings about Mary Moss Playground, that there's a speeding concern and a safety concern. So as part of that project, we looked at the roadway with police and we decided we would try a raised crosswalk near the new entrance at the corner of Lydell and John Street. And it will be, it'll be a pilot program at first, just to make sure that it has the intended result that we're looking for and that we're not creating additional issues. And if we are successful in that pilot, then we would come through and actually build the raised crosswalk with concrete and asphalt. Right now, it's going to be more like rubber pads in place of asphalt and concrete.
Deanna?
Yes.
The Linden Lane and Sprou Street improvements, will they be done simultaneously?
We are looking to put it out as one project, yes.
I mean, there's a heck of a lot of street parking on both of those streets. And if you eliminate that all at once, you're gonna have 50 or more cars looking for a place to be, perhaps on Maple Street.
Yes.
She says, Heather in her own nest.
We'll structure the contract so that we won't have both streets closed at the same time.
Yeah, there aren't any, but if there were.
I think I have it. Let's see. And then moving on, before I turn it over to Jack, is just information. And so we have been very successful working with police to acquire, I think we received three additional, actually no, I think five additional speed signs last year between purchases of the engineering department and police as well as donations from outside entities. So there are now seven speed radar signs deployed around town and they are collecting data on both volume and speed. And so it's a great tool for us to be able to do speed studies, track what 85th percentile speeds are, and just get a sense of what's happening on the roadways. And I think as time permits, I think the chief will be including that data in his annual, or his monthly report to council. So they'll start to see what speeds are being seen on our roadways. Studies and other activities that we're looking to do this year, the big project will be a parking study of the Central Business District. Jack and Lee and myself, as well as Jenny and Bob Huff in our Public Works Department have gone through all of our consultant proposals. We've whittled it down to one consultant that we will be recommending to council to contract with. And I know they are excited to get going early this spring to be able to do occupancy, or sorry, occupancy counts? Yes, occupancy counts of our parking spaces downtown. And they anticipate it's a six-month study. Study really is going to be more focused towards economic development and vitality rather than, you know, identifying new technology and rates. We had received a grant from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Authority for this study through, what is it, Transportation and Development Initiative. So that's, that's what we're focusing on this year. We're also looking to ordinance our design standards. Currently, we have the roadway design standards in the master plan. We're going to take it a step further and actually ordinance those this year. We've been working on harmonizing various codes between the former borough and the former township and looking ahead with the potential for the new stormwater permit from the state. We realize that we need to start working on a stormwater management plan. That would include mapping our entire stormwater system as well as start identifying areas that we want to break out into individual studies. One of the higher neighborhoods right now is the Harriesburg Drainage Area. We had quite a few people with that, that July storm that had issues with culverts in that area. So that's, we've already identified that as our breakout area for the year. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jack on stormwater.
Speaking of harmonizing ordinances, staff working with Joe Scoopy and our stormwater consultant, I guess it was actually last summer, we started to harmonize the township and borough stormwater ordinances. For the most part, for major developments, the ordinance is the same and that really doesn't change. What we were focusing on is what we're calling a minor development, and that's really a one and two-family house, which we seem to have a lot of these days. Basically, in the borough, as soon as you exceeded an additional 400 square feet of additional impervious, you were required to do onsite stormwater management. The township was a little different. Their threshold, first of all, was 500 square feet. But they had, there's a lot of discretion with the engineer as far as if you could tie into the storm source system, you really didn't have to provide onsite stormwater if you were below a certain percentage of impervious coverage. So there's a little bit more discretion with the township. So when we started looking at harmonizing the ordinances, we kind of looked at a hybrid of the two and probably steering a little bit more closer to the township where there was still that discretion. We did think to, you know, that it should be reduced to 400 square feet as a threshold, but still have discretion if there was, if you could tie into the storm source system or you weren't directly impacting your neighbor. Some of the other things we looked, it's changing the definition of what's considered impervious surface. For instance, in the borough, a deck is considered impervious. In the township, it wasn't. So we thought, to be conservative, that it should be impervious. I mean, even though you have the little slats, for the most part, a deck is impervious. And then just further define that a gravel is impervious, just so it's clear to everybody, because we get these arguments all the time as engineers come in. So basically, we had a draft ordinance. We then sent it to PEC for their comments. PEC, working with Stony Brook Millstone Watershed, and actually Louise Wilson got to look at it also. They're coming up with a little bit more aggressive plan. Their threshold would be 250 square feet. And also, they have a formula that for every 250 square feet of impervious, you have to retain 500 gallons onsite. And without, this way, then you're not having to hire an engineer if you're doing a single-family house. It's a relatively simple formula. Some of the other changes, they would like to change the definition of a major development. Currently, a major development is one acre of disturbance or a quarter acre of new impervious surface. They'd like to reduce that to a half acre of disturbance or 5,000 square feet of impervious coverage. Two other big items that they would like to add are, one, that quarterly inspections would be required of all the detention basins. And there would actually have to be a fee that you would have to pay, but you would need staffing to monitor that program and do those inspections. So it's kind of a big item. The next big item that they'd like to implement is, basically, when applications come in now, and I'll use the shopping center because that's one of the more recent ones, you look at only the new impervious coverage. So when the shopping center came in and then actually most of the applications in town, they're reducing the impervious coverage. So they really don't have to provide stormwater management. The Millstone Watershed people think that you can have an ordinance that would make you, it would require you to provide stormwater management for all of the existing impervious coverage. I'm not sure if that's, there would be legal challenge to that, because essentially, the shopping center wouldn't have been able to do anything without eliminating, you know, 100 parking spaces to put a big detention basin in. So we're, we're working with PEC now, trying to iron out some of the differences. It's really gonna be a decision that'll be made by council as to what that threshold is. Some of the concerns with the ordinance would be the cost. To put a drywell or a rain garden potentially can get very expensive for something small in the $5,000 range. But if, you know, somebody's putting a dish in, in a pool, you're probably talking the $10,000 to $15,000 range. So that adds to the cost of the house. A lot of the houses in town, that probably doesn't matter, but it is a concern. Another concern is the soils in Princeton are not really conducive to recharge. We have a lot of clay soils, high water table. So those are some things that are a concern when you're trying to implement everybody putting in a drywell or a rain garden. You know, if you put a rain garden in, is it gonna drain? We have a few of them in town. I know David has done one on one of his projects. Seems to be working fine. We have another one on Cradle Rock. Again, seems to be working fine. So they, you know, they do work. There is a concern that, you know, is water gonna stay in it for any length of time, especially if there's kids around? So those are some of the things we're working on. And again, some of the concerns with mandatory stormwater management is on the smaller lots. Do you even have room to put a drywell or a rain garden without impacting your neighbor? You know, if you put a drywell next to somebody's basement, are you gonna be flooding their basement? So those are things that we have to work through. Also, with doing that, the potential on some lots is that you may have to take down more trees just to be able to put a rain garden in. So don't have all the answers yet, working with PEC and Stony Brook Watershed.
Just, actually, I have two questions. One, when you talked about reducing the amount of new impervious for a major, for a major project, that also seems like it's more stringent than state regulations.
Yes.
And I know in many aspects of the code, you're not allowed to do something that's more stringent than the state. Does that not, is that not the case with stormwater?
That's my understanding, but I don't know that for, that's, that's an issue that would have to be resolved. But I believe you can be more stringent.
Yes. In fact, they, in some ways encourage it with the stormwater ordinances. And I just want to explain, the reason I weighed in or was offered the opportunity to weigh in on the draft is because I, stormwater, green infrastructure, I'm the Green Infrastructure Manager at New Jersey Future, so I work with that a lot and have been helping to advise towns on model stormwater ordinances. And they're, and you're right, there's no one-size-fits-all and a 250-square-foot minor development trigger or threshold is really small. And some great stormwater engineers would say, that's just so small that you're gonna capture a huge number of projects that, where you're not getting a lot of bang for the buck. But if there's that provision that they can infiltrate or otherwise capture and reuse 500, you know, if there's a way for them not to have to hire an engineer and suddenly make a small project into a really expensive one, that's, that's a really good thing. But there are, the covering of redevelopment as well as new development under stormwater, you know, having your stormwater requirements apply both to new development and redevelopment is a, is a really, is something that DEP has encouraged, NRDC and Sustainable Jersey, it's like a linchpin of their recommendations for ways to improve ordinances. And another is that reduction of the threshold for major development from what is now one acre to something smaller, which is another thing that Princeton is doing. So these are good, I mean, Princeton Shopping Center, I'm sorry to go on and on, but might have had options other than basins such as permeable pavement where some, a lot of its parking spaces are. Permeable pavement works really, really well and just absorbs a gigantic amount of stormwater. So there's, there's options other than infiltration basins for managing stormwater onsite and just taking some of the pressure off of the infrastructure.
I feel like I should chime in because I'm a member of the PEC also and I've seen this, I guess, proposal already. I should also mention that this has already been done. This type of ordinance has already been done in Franklin Township and other municipalities. So it's not like completely new. It's being done elsewhere.
Governing of projects that are existing?
Right.
Yes.
I mean, it seems indisputable. That's a great idea because even, I mean, to improve the stormwater quality, even if you're not so concerned about the quantity, to be able to clean up the-
Yeah. I think that it's just a matter of fine tuning it, I think, to make sure that it's not too prohibitive or restrictive for people. But I think that it's a great way to deal with stormwater management.
So there will be a presentation to council in March. I don't recall which, which meeting in March, but the, PEC will be presenting to the council at least some type of a draft ordinance.
All right. Are there any more questions? Thank you both very much. So an amazing amount of work going on. Lee, did you have any follow-up? Did you want to say something about the affordable housing? Just briefly, I think Gail had asked you to.
Sure. I can give a very brief update. As you all know, the Supreme Court recently ruled on something that was called the gap year, and that was to make up or to create a need for the period in between when COA was basically doing nothing. And what the Supreme Court said is, yes, you have to account for the gap year. So now what we're looking at is rather than just a 10-year period, it's gonna be from, I think, 2000 going ahead to 2025 will be this new third round. So that's what the court said, and they said, yes, you have to take it into account. They didn't say what the number is. And I think what I'd like to explain is the process that we're in. What happened over a year ago was the New Jersey Supreme Court, and Alan, jump in if I say anything wrong, I know you're familiar with this too, that the state, through COA and its agencies, were not implementing the Fair Housing Act. So they then said the courts will- So they then said, the courts will take over the process, and then said, each county court will oversee the municipalities in the county to come up with an affordable housing plan, and it should follow, basically, the previous COA rules going forward. What that means is, we need to determine what the number is, and the way COA had determined the numbers in Rounds One and Two is, through a series of fairly complex formulas, they came up with a statewide number that then got distributed down to regional housing regions, and then to each individual municipality. The problem, as I see it anyhow, with the court decisions, they didn't set up a way to do that statewide. What they said is, each community has to come up with its own number, using this COA previous round formula, and then develop a plan. When the county courts got hold of it, they were following the direction from the Supreme Court, and they said, well, you need to come up with a number, and oh, by the way, we would like you to begin developing your plan. So the court case that you've been reading about lately with Judge Jacobson, and what's going on, has two parts to it, as far as I understand. The first part is, there is discussion of what the number would be. Back up a little bit, there is no accepted number. What has happened is, an advocacy group, the Fair Share Housing Coalition, or whatever they're called, came up with a formula and a number. They used actually a local resident here in Princeton, David Kinsey, and you may have heard either the Fair Share Housing number or the Kinsey number. And they did that for the whole state, and then said, here's what each municipality's number is. About two hundred municipalities banded together and hired their own expert. Princeton is one of those participating communities. And had an expert, originally it was Professor Burchell, who had done the numbers work for COA before. He had some health issues, and they ended up hiring E. Consult to redo what he had. And E. Consult also came up with a set of numbers. In Mercer, the court has hired a numbers expert, who has come up with some preliminary numbers as well. So there are really three different numbers that are out there. And the attorney handling this is Kevin Van Heis out of Mason Griffin Pearson, has said, don't go too far into any of the numbers or the proposals. But those numbers range for Princeton from a low of about three hundred to a high of about fourteen hundred. So there's a large range, which is why we're in this process of determining first, what is that number? And what we've been trying to do is come up with what we believe is a fair and reasonable number. The second part, which the court said, is you're supposed to do a housing plan, and use the prior COA rules, but come up with something. And we've done that. For the newer members, our housing plan, or what we submitted to the court, is on the municipal website. If you go to the front page and scroll down about three-quarters of the way, it may be near the very end, there's a third-round Fair Share Plan numbers. And I can just briefly go over that for you. There are a lot of different ways that you can meet your number. They include inclusionary zoning, where you zone a parcel with a twenty percent set aside, so if a hundred units are built, twenty of them would have to be affordable. It could be a hundred percent affordable, so that you either self-fund, or you find federal or state money to build a hundred percent affordable housing, or some combination of. You're allowed to do special needs housing or group homes, and you get certain credits for that as well. You can utilize redevelopment. What I also left out is, there's also a rehabilitation component in the affordable housing requirements, and we've come up with a plan for that. That's a separate number. It's usually not as contentious a number, but you should be aware that there is that. So what we've done, and I should point out, in Princeton, while COA really wasn't active, we continued. We had a plan that we submitted in 2008 that was supposed to be our third-round plan, and we started to implement not all of it, but a lot of it. So what we've done is, there are already a hundred and thirty-four affordable units that were constructed based on that third-round plan, and just as a sampling, I'll focus on some of the bigger ones. It's the redevelopment downtown where the parking garage is. There were twelve units of affordable housing between the two sites that were built with apartment housing. Harriet Bryan House was constructed, that's sixty-seven units. Copperwood was completed, that's twelve units. And then there are a few others, or quite a few others, and there are probably three to four to five spread out throughout the community. We also have a total of a hundred and twenty under construction, some of them are further along than others. That would simply be the Meriwok Stanworth Development, there were fifty-six units there, as well as Avalon Bay. And those are moving along, and that's a hundred and twenty units that are under construction. In addition to those two, there's 255 Nassau, and there was a group home on Hilltop. So we've continued to march along and provide affordable housing. We then have some sites that are zoned, so an inclusionary site, but they haven't been constructed. And those are the Franklin Parking Lot, that was part of the hospital. When the hospital announced it was going to be selling that, we rezoned the area to provide for a twenty percent set aside, and we're estimating at this point, five units there. And then the vacant parcel at Tryun and Harrison near the shopping center was, has always been zoned with an affordable housing, twenty percent set aside, and we're estimating we would get fifteen affordable from that development as well, if that's fully developed. And then we have two sites that we proposed to zone back in 2008. We haven't created the zoning, because we were waiting to get approval, and that would be at Princeton Community Village, to increase the units there by about forty. The town is actively working with Princeton Community Housing, who owns and manages the development up there, to seek federal funds or tax credit funding to develop forty additional units. And then the S2 rezoning, which is the service zone, or as you're on 206 heading north towards Montgomery, where the commercial development is, we were proposing to rezone that. Right now, that doesn't allow any residential at all, and we thought that that's an appropriate area for some redevelopment, not in a formal sense to occur, where we would allow apartments above the stores, and we were estimating at the time, thirty units there. And all of this is, again, on the webpage, there's a table, and then there's actually a map that sort of shows you where all of this is. Those two sites would yield another seventy. So what we had was a plan for three hundred and thirty-nine actually-built units. Our housing consultant is Shirley Bishop, and under the COA formulas, depending on what type of housing it is, rental, very low, redevelopment and the like, we get credits. And we would receive about a hundred and six credits. So the plan that we submitted to the courts, it's probably close to a year, was for four hundred and forty-five affordable units and credits. So we do have a plan. It's on the website, it's what's publicly been submitted to the courts. So we continue to do that. Once we get a number determined, I think then, both the council and the planning board will have to meet to say, do we need to amend the plan? I'm assuming if the number is, you know, four hundred or five hundred, we may not have a lot of work to do. If it's fourteen hundred, we're gonna have a lot of work and some tough discussions to be made. But that's really the process. Go through the court process, determine a number, and then see where we are with our plan and its number, and whether we, I don't really anticipate that we would necessarily be decreasing the number, it would be more if we need to increase it. I can't, I know there have been some discussions about settlement, and I really can't talk about that. Just, you should be aware that the community is fully engaged in that, but I really can't go into any detail on that. I don't know if there are any questions for me?
Anyone? Jenny?
Well, just a point of clarification, I mean, in case people don't understand, because I think I've seen this, kind of a mistake, that there's a misconception that we can zone some land as a hundred percent affordable housing, because that's what everyone wants, because that way we would get the affordable housing, and we wouldn't have the, you know, super, a lot of development with it. But we can't do that unless we, at the same time, we include that number, we also include proof that we have funding, that that's a real viable project. So you'd have to have some nonprofit entity backing up those, that plan. So that's why we don't have a large, I mean, we have one at Princeton Community Housing, because they're ready to do it, pretty much.
Okay. Lee, thank you very much. There have been a lot of questions recently, and I think the board needs to be constantly brought up to speed as to where we are, and just what the possibilities are. If there's nothing else-
Since Mildred's not here, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn all this in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So my end always gets to-
Aye.
Each of us has a few extra questions tonight, but it won't be that way.
Question, thank you very much for your very-
Sure.
Forrest Bacon?